Good evening. For the record, Neil Marcus Stone, PC 158, Year 11, New Danbury. And I'm here on behalf of the property owner, Adrian Tepexo, and he has been cited for violation of the Bethel zoning regulations in connection with the rental of his property on a short term under the program which is known as AIRB&amp;B. Which, for those of you who are not familiar with it, is an organization that basically runs rentals nationally. So they have certain qualifications to rent for people to rent properties. They have certain policy procedures, but essentially they're a large real estate agency that does rentals. That's what they are. They've created quite a problem in a lot of communities because the nature of their rentals can be very short term. A night or two, could be a week or two. So the question is, has arisen as to whether or not an AIRB&amp;B by virtue of its rental status violates the zoning regulations. Now, we got to start from the beginning. The problem is, you're going to be asked tonight by me, and maybe we'll take some time to consult with counsel, to make a legal rule on the effect of the zoning regulations and the use of the property for a short-term rental. So you got to start out with your statutory authority, which is in Section 8-1 and 8-2 of the Connecticut General Statutes. And if you go to the authority of the zoning commission, it's basically to regulate the use of property. You can divide the town into zones for industrial, commercial, residential. You can allow single-family homes. You can allow multiple-family homes. I mean, you can go to how a property is being used. What you can't do under here is regulate how a property is being owned or the right or title to occupy a property. That's not in zoning at all. There's not zoning regulations in the state of Connecticut that can do that because the authority in the statute is merely to regulate uses. And that's pretty well outlined here. And then if you go into the Bethel zoning regs and you look at their purposes too, I mean, generally, the purposes of the Bethel zoning regs, as we stated, are to regulate use, to avoid overcrowding of property, to allow white and air. Purposes are set forth in 1.2 to give guidance to growth, provide added light, air, and privacy, protect and conserve values of land and buildings in various zones, bring about the gradual conformity of land to the regulations themselves, promote the beneficial relationship between the uses of land and buildings, and the circulation of traffic, et cetera. Control development. Again, you can say that certain houses require 40,000 square feet, others require 20,000 square feet of land. So you can obviously control development to make sure that there's adequate provision of water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. You can, as a zoning commission, you can protect and conserve natural resources. You've got particularly groundwater. You can ensure that there's a provision to avoid seviation and erosion in the town. You can encourage the development of housing opportunities, including opportunities for multifamilies consistent with soil types, terrain, infrastructure capacity, et cetera. You can encourage and promote agricultural farming activities. But there's nothing in here that says you can control whether somebody wants to rent the property for the weekend. Seriously, there's nothing that allows a zoning commission to do that. So the town of Bethel cited this 3.5, so claiming that he violated, and hopefully you have a copy of the cease and desist order, you know, the violation, because it claims that he violated the use, that his property violated use because it says right up here, I'm looking at the August 14th, '23 notice of violation, order to remedy. And it starts out with AIRB&amp;B. Well, AIRB&amp;B does not own the property at 19 Midway Drive. And AIRB&amp;B doesn't really have a physical presence here in the town of Bethel. So basically, they're citing the property owner, who's standing here to my right. And the property owner, it says, "The property exists in a residential R10 zone." And it does. So the first question you need to ask is, what are you allowed to do in the R10 zone? So we're going to look at that in a minute. And because I said, he often has become aware that the residence is being used as an AIRB&amp;B in violation of the zoning regs. But there really isn't a zoning regulation in Bethel that says you can't rent your property for the weekend at an agency. Well, AIRB&amp;B, imagine if they said that you can't sell your property and use it in particular real estate. So there's no, you can't have a regulation against a company, AIRB&amp;B. Zoning regulations for the residential zone, according to Mr. Pollard, says a permit would be needed for a home-based business. Well, the question is, and then he says, "An AIRB&amp;B is not currently allowed as a business." Well, he's right. It's not only not allowed as a business, it's not in business in the town of Bethel. It is merely a, basically a site in a computer where you can arrange to rent a property in the town of Bethel. So my client, do you have any relationship with AIRB&amp;B? Are you an officer? Are you an employee? Do you get compensated by them for anything? Do they run a business out of this home that you own? The AIRB&amp;B is not currently allowed in business, but it's not, it's not a business if it's adverse. So that's the cease and desist order. And that's what we have appealed because we do not believe in the spread. So in your application material, you have our application. And at the back of the application, you have a copy of my September 21st letter to Mr. Pollard. And it says, "Please be advised that this office is representing the owners of the property at 14, 19 Midway with respect to the notice of violation you sent on August 14th. The subject premises are located in the R10 zone and its uses conform to Section 3.2, 3.8, 3.1." If you got to go to your zoning regs, we look at Section 3.2, 13.1, and these are principal uses instructions in all the R zones, the R, the R10 through the R80. And permitted is a single-family dwelling, one per lot. What's on your property? What is on your property, on your property, in your home? Single-family dwelling, do you have more than one per lot? Have you ever had anything on that property other than the single-family dwelling? So I go on to suggest, Mr. Pollard, that the notice violation alleges the property is being used for a home-based business, which you believe to be a company called AIRB&amp;B. It's a national company, which to my knowledge does not have any offices in the town of Bethel. It essentially provides house for short-term rentals. It's to my knowledge, the actual business of AIRB&amp;B is on the internet without any requirement from the company to have a physical location in the town where a broker property. Subject property does not have an office for any other commercial activity. It is simply a single-family residence. In deciding this application tonight, you're welcome to inspect the property. It is a single-family town. But you're certainly welcome. The issuance of a short-term rental is difficult for any of our local towns. Deal with it so far as most zoning regulations don't even address. And the reason is, Section 8-2 of the Connecticut General Statute makes that difficult. As a matter of fact, as in long-term rentals are not addressed either. There's nothing in Bethel that says anything about renting your house for a year if you're a company, so do you, Europe, or somewhere else, and you're not going to be in the home. You can do that. It's not an zoning issue at all. I'm in closing for purifications and explanations of the case of Whitby versus zoning board of appeals of Pine Orchard Association, which is a very recent Connecticut case that deals with the short-term rental use of property. And I'll go through that with you guys through the minutes. Whitby is so new that it was decided by the Connecticut appellate court, after funds period court in March of 2023. So it's less than a year old. That's the most current reading on AIRB&amp;B, if you don't. The Bethel zoning regulation defined your residence as a place where one or more individuals are actually living at a given time. Mr. Pax, who lives? Is your property, like, might be devoted, might not be, like? Are you a single family?
Yes.
Do you have people living with you who are not members of your family? So the, it also defines a family as any, that involves people related by blood, marriage, civil union, or adoption, and up to three additional underlaid people, living and cooking together in a single house, keeping you. Neither the definition of a residence or a family refers to the manner in which the party obtains possession of the house in which the family resides. Be owned, be titled, it can be rented to a broker agent. That's not a zoning issue. Since the allegations that there's an illegal business being conducted from the premises does not seem to have any basis in fact, I welcome the opportunity to talk to you further concerning this, to be sure that the actual use of the property conforms with the zoning regs. So quite honestly, I didn't get any, no response to that, other than the order was going to stand. So in Whitby, let me tell you about Whitby for a second. Pine Orchards is part of the borough of Branford. But interestingly enough, Pine Orchards is an old-time community that has its own zoning regulation, even though it's not a municipal account. It goes back to permission from the Connecticut Legislature back in the 1920s, '30s, more than that. Anyway, so this is against Pine Orchards Association, which is the zoning authority in this neighborhood. And it says at the time, the court says at the time that zoning regulations is tied with, claim was made, the zoning regulations committed a single-family dwelling in the zone, it defined single-family dwellings, building design, occupancy as a home or residence, but not more than one family, much like Bethel. In 2018, Pine Orchards amended its regulations saying that you can't use a short-term, a single-family residence in a short-term rental property. But that, this case arises prior to the amendment in 2018. But there, in Pine Orchards, they specifically regulated the short-term rental of property. And that was, that's not what this case challenges. This case challenges the use of the property prior to any zoning regulations at all. So the plaintiffs appealed to the ZDA claiming that their use was a, was protected as a non-conforming use under a prior version of the regulations. The ZDA upheld the order that the short-term rentals were never permitted use under the regulation. The plaintiff appealed to the Superior Court. The Superior Court determined that the plaintiff's use of the property was a permissible short-term rental use, was a permissible lawful use of the properties because it's consistent with the definition of the single-family dwelling. The property used exclusively as a home or a residence because the renters occupied it in a residential manner. And there was no way to distinguish between short-term and long-term rentals absent a clearly defined regulation. So the court found the use to be legally non-conforming because in 2018, the regulations changed. The appellate court agreed that short-term rental use was consistent, who we use in the single-family dwelling. And in reaching that conclusion, it first analyzed whether rentals were permissible in Pine Orchard. The court noted that not only was there no regulatory requirement that a single-family dwelling be owner-occupied, but that the regulations permitted all sorts of sales, rentals, et cetera, in this community. Further, this is kind of interesting, the court recognized that the ability of property owners to rent their properties, their property, is one of a bundle of rights that constitutes the essence of ownership of property. They went into the constitutional side of the case. Finding that there was no restriction on the rental of property as a permissible use, the court addressed, next addressed whether short-term rentals was incompatible with the definition of a single-family dwelling. In doing so, the court analyzed the definition of the single-family dwelling focusing primarily on what constitutes a home or residence. And it noted that the common definition of a home may imply a more fixed or permanent domicile, but a residence could not necessarily require the same sense of permanency, so that residence could be short-term. The court then analyzed the exclusion of rumors and borders, and we don't have to go into that here because it's not an issue. Ultimately, the court agreed that the Superior Court, with the Superior Court, that so long as one family occupies the property as a home or residence at a given time, regardless of how long that time period is, the short-term rental was permitted lawful under the regulations that existed prior to the 2018 change. So the court basically upheld the Superior Court's decision, and the Superior Court overruled both the ZDA, which upheld the enforcement order, and overruled the zoning enforcement officer on short-term rentals. So, Mr. Pax, so when, do you lease your property on weekends for short-term rental?
Yes.
And do you lease it to a single family or to multiple families?
Single family.
And do you know, how many people consist of a single family? I mean, could it be three or four, five, or six, or seven?
Seven, some by seven, some by eight.
Your own single family at this point is just a five?
Yes.
But there are times on weekends where there could be more than five people in a family?
Yes.
Do you lease the property to multiple families?
No.
So the issue that's on appeal here is whether, A, first of all, whether the order was properly citing my client in the first place, because it was really, as I say, directed to an AIRB&amp;B. And whether there is anything in the Bethel zoning regs that prohibit short-term rentals. And as I say, this is an issue, when I worked with Mr. Pollard, I said, this is an issue that all the towns around here face. When I was counseled recently for the town of Fairfield, we actually had to write a regulation dealing with short-term rentals. It is very specific in New Fairfield, what you're allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do in short-term rentals. There's no question. It's not ambiguous. And the regulation in New Fairfield has nothing to do with the fact that you rent the property for short-term. The regulation in New Fairfield is based on the use of the property. And what you need to have in New Fairfield is a certification that your septic system will handle the number of people. You need to limit the number of people based on the bedrooms, because septic is based on bedrooms. And you need to show that you have adequate parking and adequate water. Because the problem up in New Fairfield, quite honestly, was the summer communities like Kenwood Knolls, Kenwood Isle, where you had very narrow roads, no parking off of the roads, and you had very old septic systems on very small lots. And it became really a nuisance issue, and a health nuisance issue. So when we wrote the regs for the town of New Fairfield, we focused on what are legitimate zoning issues. I'll go back and have you, I'm not going to reread them too, but go back and read your own regulations as to what's legitimate. It has to do with health, safety, quality of air, water, and all of those things. It's not to say that neighbors can control the use of a property because they don't like the fact that there's a party going on on Saturday night, or that there's a, you know, baby shower going on on a Sunday afternoon. It's, or that there's a volleyball game in the backyard on the side of the afternoon. Those aren't zoning issues. Those are, you know, just questions of if a property violates the noise regulation of a town, then it can be cited. And if you have people who occupy the property and make a lot of noise, then that can be a violation. But the fact that you decide to rent your property on a weekend to a family and use AIRB&amp;B as the agency, or any other agency, is not a zoning goal. It can't be currently under the Bethel zoning regs. And I'm not sure it can be long-term because it goes to the ownership of the property and the right as a tenant and the right as a landlord to use the property as long as it complies with the single-family residential requirements. So having said that, we're going to ask you to vote to overturn a decision of the zoning enforcement officer that bans the use of my client's property for a short-term rental. Because quite honestly, there's nothing, there are other properties in the town of Bethel where I'm sure short-term rentals occur. And it would be discriminatory to say that just 19 Midway violates the regulations. On the other hand, if you feel strongly about doing something about short-term rentals, I'm going to throw it back to to Beth Kavagin and say, come forward with a, with a regulation that we can deal with a use of the property and that will deal, will make sure that properties, if rented, are still not violating the the regulations for a single-family home. It's a legal issue. I mean, you know, you're going to be asked today to determine whether the Whitby case, which is an appellate court case, applies to your regulations. And I'm not sure that it's really fair to the board to do that, especially with some of you attending your first meeting. But the fact of the matter is, the process when you get a zoning violation is an administrative requirement that you bring it to the ZDA. If the ZDA determines that Mr. Pollard was right, and that something in these regulations prohibits short-term regs, then the Superior Court can hear and appeal and decide whether Whitby will apply to Bethel for one. At the moment, nobody has overruled that case, but then again, it was only decided last March. So I'm going to ask you to avoid the expense both by my client and by the town to determine whether Whitby case is, in fact, good law, because I think it is. And that's it. I mean, other than that, the property will continue to be occupied by clients, and they will continue to have the opportunity, if they see fit, to rent it as long as the people who rent it on any given week or day are a single family and do not operate the property in violation of the regulations. And that's it. That'd be answer any questions?
Can I ask the lawyer a question? I might ask Beth to speak about this on this panel.
Okay. Well, first of all, I thought it was important for you to understand how the department reached the conclusions that they did, that AIRB&amp;Bs are not allowed with, you know. And that was done, Mr. Marcus has cited the cease and desist and and all those matters to it. I just wanted to walk you through the regulations and the steps that were involved in doing this. You recognize it's a single-family zone. It's a small lot. But what we do is, we review the uses within the residential single-family zone. It's by understanding the home is not occupied by the owner of the premises. Therefore, the home-based business regulations do not apply in this instance. Then we go to where we always go, to definitions, Section 2.2 of the regulations. And we find, well, the term AIRB&amp;B is not defined. And reviewing the regulations, there are regulations for what we would call similar uses. Similar uses being hotel, motel, motor hotel. These are all allowed in the commercial and industrial zones by a special permit. Another definition that we have, and I'm speaking louder so everybody can hear me in the room. We don't have mics tonight. Another definition we have would be a bed and breakfast. Now, this is allowed under a single-family residential zone. But it's a special permit, and all the items that Mr. Marcus brought up in his discussion dealing with parking and noise and the key phrase being owner occupation would be applied, applicable to this. So the single-family residential zone does have a similar use to what the present property owner is using his property for, similar in nature that there may be potential people, what I would call trans, transients coming in, staying for a couple of days and leaving. But the key to that is, the homeowner is there. I think we're all familiar with the term bed and breakfast, what a bed and breakfast is. And if you look at the regulations in Section 360, it gives you a very clear determination of that. So after you'd identified the possible similar uses in the zones that are allowed, we bet back, I went back to the use of the property as an AIRB&amp;B and determined the following, that an AIRB&amp;B is a form of transient hospitality. Single-family homeowners, homeowners have the right to rent their properties for the benefit of the income it produces, but at the same time, the tenants are making a commitment to become part of the Bethel community, which includes being part of a neighborhood. So the neighbors see a familiar face coming in and out of a premises, a school system, town services, recreational activities, and possible employment. A property owner renting a home on a daily basis, weekend or weekly, is a commercial endeavor. That was staff's opinion, similar in use to a hotel or bed and breakfast, but without the review of safety, health, parking requirements, and the owner of the resident being, residence being present. Transient hospitality within a residential zone is not allowed, in staff's opinion, under the present county Bethel regulations, and is disrupting to the normal and customary day-to-day occurrences in a single-family residential neighborhood. And what I did was, I did cite several sections of the regulations and dealing with, in particular, principal uses and structures. Let me go back to that, sorry. I just want to cite what I made reference to in informing this opinion. I did go to the help center of AIRB&amp;B, where they talk about responsible hosting in the United States, and I quoted Page 6 through 10, where it says very specifically what you should do if you want to be an AIRB&amp;B host. The AIRB&amp;B regulations, what regulations apply to my city in particular. In particular, Page 11 talks about zoning rules. Complaints, we see numerous complaints, that's Pages 14 through 19. Police reports, Pages 20 through 25. We do have a letter from Ken Patel from Fairfield Inns, owner on Route 6. I also have, interesting enough, when you talk about the whole AIRB&amp;B, I have one through the building file. I have a CO in there dated 6/28 for a house rebuild. But I note for the record, when I look at the AIRB&amp;B pictures and descriptions, which are Page 29 to 38, it shows that there's unfinished basement that was not permitted. It also shows that there is a pool in the back that was never permitted, and also an outdoor kitchen. So my concern is that, you know, we are talking about, we're doing an AIRB&amp;B, but I really was stressing the use of the property presently, and all these other items that are mentioned are almost secondary to the discussion of use at this point. But it does raise many concerns. to uh the discussion of use at this point, but it does raise many concerns that I have in regards to what is presently occurring as far as the use of property. Um, whether it be for long-term rental or short-term rental as as the applicant is doing now. But it more in particular for short-term rental to have a property um that is not up to snuff, basically using the throwing the phrase around of Airbnb, where after this decision is made, I'm sure that um other items pertaining to the property will have to be addressed because of safety issues and health concerns.
Anybody, thank you. Go ahead.
Anybody in the in the.
Oh, sure. Okay, so uh you you ask your client, that if he rented to one family, you know, a family or multiple families, right? And what do you think? He said just a single family?
Yes.
But really, it should have been multiple single families. Is that correct? It's not just one family all the time.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's multiple single families. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the requirements to the zoning regs is it doesn't specify who they are.
I know, I just, what I'm saying to you is he at least said he was renting to one family. But but really, he is renting to multiple.
Different people, different people.
Different people, different families.
Somebody even said something.
I just wanna make sure that was clear because, you know, on the record, he only said that he was renting to the one family and really it's the multiple families at different times.
Can we, can we get, I'm sorry, but will we get public input?
Stay your name and address, please.
Kevin Doris, twenty-eight Midway. Door is down from nineteenth. Uh, first of all, is Airbnb have a monetary interest in any of this rental?
Yes, they get a.
Okay, excuse me. Wait, everybody ask their que- again, I'm sorry for interrupting. Everybody ask their questions. And then we'll we'll answer. We'll we'll get responses either by that, by the applicant, by the P O talent, me or the commission members. So you just make your comments, ask your questions, and then when you're done, we'll go through the answers.
So Airbnb does have a monetary interest in nineteen Midway Drive, correct?
We'll find out.
Correct. And second of all, uh, police action at nineteen Midway Drive. Uh, I went to the police station. Uh, there has been eight noise complaints starting two-thirty in the morning uh at nineteen Midway Drive in the last since this Airbnb has been open. So that's become a major issue for the neighborhood. Yeah, okay, very good.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Elaine Samberg, uh thirty-three Midway Drive. Um, I've seen multiple families at one time renting the place. So not, so not multiple families on different multiple days, but at one time. And also cars, they offer parking for cars for however many fifteen or sixteen folks that they say could like to place at the same time. Um, their driveway maybe holds three cars. They have a garage. But there have been times when there's cars parked on both sides and you can't get through the street there. And then there's a noise issue and it could be till o'clock in the morning. Couple of times it was more like five o'clock in the morning. That's music, people screaming, um, while I was up at night.
What we're hearing, uh, were you thirty-five, you said?
Thirty-three.
Tim Barrell, thirty-one Midway Drive. Uh, I also noticed that, like she said, there was one time I was watching a fifteen-passenger van come into nineteen Midway Drive and unload. And it looked like an entire van. I'm sorry, that's not a family to me. That's a party. They lasted until four o'clock in the morning. Now, uh, on top of that, I have heard like my neighbor has said, multiple families, they are having a great time. And also coming out of the house, there's steps to the pool that I wanna say are at least eleven to forty feet in depth. No rails, no, no way for anybody to walk down them safely. And there's no railing around the pool for children. And I have heard children there multiple times jumping into the pool and everything else. And while the adults are at the bar that's outside drinking.
Anybody else? Would like to speak against this? Anybody want to speak?
Yeah, cuz I I wouldn't.
No, not yet. Gary, no, you gotta wait.
Anybody wanna speak in favor of it? Okay, that's your last chance. Be, no, not you. Cause what what you give your opinion and that's it. If anybody wants to say anything. Okay, so now we're gonna ask ourselves questions.
I can't answer Airbnb's monetary, I don't know thing.
I I can.
Well, I, Mr. Marcus, can you?
I don't know what Airbnb's interest is other than they do act as a broker, essentially a clearinghouse. And uh, and I assume that they get compensated for their work.
Let's be based.
Well, I, I, you know, again, when I was reviewing it, I was trying to look at it from the point of view. I look, I look, I was thinking of that and I'm like, well, if a realtor rents a property. If a realtor, right, they get a commission, right? Even if they rent a property. But so I would assume Airbnb gets something.
Yeah, they are the realtor. Like them, love them or hate them, they're the realtor. So basically, if you wanted to rent your house for the month of August because you're gonna be out of town and you used a local real estate agent and they rented it, that would not be a business that took place at your house. I mean, it was rent, your house is rented, but the real estate broker has an office somewhere else. That's what Airbnb is. They have no office here in Bethel. The or at the house. I mean, they're in some office building, you know, maybe in San Francisco would work. But uh, they do probably, uh, I know that they do have a fee schedule for leasing.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah. And they provide services. I mean, basically, they certain services to both the landlord and the tenant. She said, somebody was quoting their, or you were quoting their book.
Yeah.
If, and again, if there's a violation of that and uh you could apparently be banned from Airbnb if uh there notices that you're a customer, you're a tenant, and you violate this, you can be banned. I'm told. By the way, I have to confess, I've never done anything on Airbnb. I know, I'm not involved in them at all. So my knowledge of them is just in a little bit of anecdotal books of research.
Well.
Well, a question that I have is when the short-term tenant moves out, does the owner or does Airbnb come in to clean the place? Restock it, do the laundry? Who does that?
My understanding is that the landlord, which would be the owner, is responsible for cleanup. But again, it's also my understanding that the tenant sometimes puts up either a deposit against leaving a property clean when they leave, and then they get that back. And all of that is usually controlled through Airbnb.
Okay.
Uh, but the actual services, to my knowledge, does Airbnb provide any services to you on the site?
No, we do the cleanup.
Can I answer a question? I'm a little confused here. If he, if you tell us that he lives there with his daughters and stuff, why would there be four, five, or six police reports? I know that, cause I have children. If there was a party going on at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, and it was loud, I would go downstairs and tell them, knock the crap off. So I have a little bit of a kind of a trust issue. You can't be living there and all this noise and all this stuff is going all around you, but you don't do anything? The police have to be called? Doesn't that sound a little, doesn't that just sound a little odd to you at 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 some point? That if I'm living on the premise, that I'm renting and some things are going on and I am, and I'm creating a noise problem, that I wouldn't go down there and tell the people?
Okay, so two things. First of all, you are confused a little bit. When the property is being rented, the owner and his family are not there. Are you, are you there when the property is running? Because that would not make it a single-family residence. Then you'd have a multifamily residence. And that would be a violation and you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to put up with me tonight. That would be a violation. But he, the property owner leaves and turns it over to a tenant. The tenant apparently has a noisy party. And the police are then called out. But however, my understanding, are some of those police reports aimed at your parties and your use of the property? No. No, okay. So you, when you have a party there, the police don't come out. So you're, you are correct in assuming that we have some tenants that have apparently misbehaved based on the police report. And that's, but again,
One or two times.
Can a zoning regulation stop you from renting your property because your tenant could be unruly? The answer is no, you can't do that. However, however, is it a violation to have, as I say, too much noise or lights or whatever, or cars blocking the street? Absolutely, and you could be cited for that. However, the citation we're dealing with tonight is not that. The citation says you can't rent your property for a short term, period. Not, you have to be more particular about your tenants, but you can't rent your, that's the problem. But I agree that lousy tenants are lousy tenants.
The, the, the citation is saying that you cannot, you are correct in saying that you cannot rent your property on a short-term basis. But the reason for that is because the town considers that that use, that particular short-term rental as a transient, a form of hotel or transient hospitality.
That's it. So I understand that.
Okay, however, that is not allowed within the Town of Bethel regs.
Yep.
Only because in the Town of Bethel, the way we interpret our regs is that if it's not listed by definition, then it is not an allowed use.
But the.
Under the constitution, someone has the right
Yep.
to own property and to rent their property. Okay?
What you're saying, what you're saying is the exact Whippy case. That's Whippy, yeah.
But that is not, because I believe in that case, consideration should have been taken for the way that the official came about to make that conclusion. That there was other alternatives for someone to offer their property for short-term rentals under the bed and breakfast regulation. When the regulations were formed, they were formed thinking that, okay, if we're gonna allow for someone to rent a room, come to Bethel, stay for the weekend, do something, enjoy the town, we have to make an allowance for that, which we did through our bed and breakfast regulations. What we're doing with this particular notion is doing a complete disruption. Doesn't matter where the Airbnb is, whether it's nineteen Midway Drive or somewhere else. You look at the use, you look at the uses surrounding a single-family residential area and the effect that those uses will have on there that are not normal and customary to a single-family residents. And then having transient people or transient hospitality coming in and out of a home right next door to you is totally a business venture, a commercial use, in my opinion. Because if someone is living in the residence and doing whatever has been going on in this particular instance, you either pick up the phone and you call your neighbor and you have a discussion. Or you pick up the phone, you call the zoning department. And 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 what what do we do? We refer you to the police department. We refer you to anyone dealing with ordinances or things that are not right. But we also would talk to the property owner who lives on the premises. In this instance, I have not seen anything over there. I mean, I've driven by just to see what's going on and stuff. I have not seen anything but cars with Florida plates on the property. So I have no indication of what's going on over there outside of it being rented through Airbnb, Airbnb. Well, good, but it's about the use.
But your conclusion is contrary to the appellate court. That's.
Do we have a copy of that?
Yeah, I submitted it.
It should be there.
Yeah. Above it, you don't have a copy of the case. You have a copy of the analysis of the case.
Okay.
This was this analysis.
I love to read those.
Yeah, well, if you can get it, I mean, it's even go online.
Well, I mean, if you've got a copy, you're.
I don't have a copy of the actual decision. I have the analysis.
The analysis, I just have a question. Is there a um, is there a kitchen in the basement?
No.
But there's a bedroom in the basement.
It is a bedroom. But the, uh, back to your question, of the case itself, this analysis was actually done by the planning and zoning section of the Connecticut Bar Association. And we had a long discussion on the zoning, the zoning effect of short-term rental. And quite obviously, it was our opinion that the zoning regulation to specifically deal with rentals. Specifically, and you can't just sort of intuit it. So.
The chairman's distracted.
Excuse me, gentlemen, you have to.
So here's, I guess my question. Okay, so I, and I think I found that out. So when, when people, when you rent it out to a another person, another family, one family, okay, you move out of the house.
Yes, I move off.
Okay, so, I, again, I'm kind of coming from the building department standard, okay, where residents, I know there's probably some kind of fancy Latin word means you reside. I know there's probably some fancy Latin words you've been telling, but so then to me, he's not using it as a resident. It it's not a resident.
That's correct. And that's what the court said. It doesn't matter who resides there as long as it's a single family.
Well, the thing of it is, is that it would, it wouldn't be a residential zone. It's not, it's not a residential zone. Because you're having transient people come in. That's a hotel. And and the reason for that is, okay, is that from the way the building code looks at things, okay, is that when you reside somewheres, okay, you you get certain, let's say, certain breaks when you're building the house. Because you live there. You're familiar. Oh, that door sticks, you know, that thing is stuck for thirty years, you know, you know that. You know, you, you know that the, there's a big little high step on the bottom of the stair. You know, don't go out that door. It's not locked now. You know, you know, because it's your house, you reside there. You know, you reside there. You live there. You live there. So not that you come and go every night, you know, somebody comes in at night and they go out, bam, they set that other step. They never knew it was there. You know, I mean, I've done that because I've been in inspections and all of a sudden some freaky thing catches you, then you notice without it there. But what I'm saying to you is, is that now all of a sudden, when you have transient people, that there has safety regulations in there. You know, they might have to have the, the building might have to, it might have to have an exit directly to the outside, all those things, you know, that are for safety. And that's what you were talking about, safety, okay? Now, you know.
So basically, you're saying that.
If it's used as a resident, so the person who's using it is familiar with the premises.
Yep.
That to me is the guy, he resides there. He resides there.
But you're saying that.
If he, if he's, you're telling me he doesn't reside there.
He doesn't reside there.
Well, he doesn't. Well, he doesn't.
No.
Then he moves out.
That's correct. He doesn't reside there.
And then he has transient people coming. So transient people to me.
The short-term rentals.
Yeah, it is, it's a motel. And then, and then, then the problem.
You think, I understand that you got the appellate court, which the people, they were not.
Well, you got your opinion, I got mine.
Well, that's not mine. There's a bunch of.
But what I'm saying to you is, is that if it's short-term, okay, then it's, then it's transient, it's a motel. That's, that's a motel.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, it's exactly.
However, as I said, when we dealt with this in the town of New Fairfield, we determined that we should have specific regulations dealing with rental properties. And and quite honestly, short-term and long-term rental properties both need to qualify because of the same issue. If, how about if you rented your property for a year?
Well, because, exactly, I'll tell you exactly. Cause now all of a sudden, they, they're a resident there. They live there. They know the sticky door. They know the shower doesn't, just, you know, a little pretty on one side. They know all those things because they've lived there for a long time. They're familiar with the premises.
That's correct.
Okay, when you have somebody come in only for a couple of days, they, they have no idea.
So, so let me just give you an example. So, so let me just give you an example of a rental in the town of Bethel a number of years ago. Where the tenants didn't want to pay their, their rent for, I don't know, we didn't, we thought it was, they just didn't want to pay the rent. And they claimed that it was the condition of the premises and they actually got the Bethel Health Department to come out. And order my client to scrape some, some peeling paint from the, from the, from the eaves. And repaint the outside of the house because they found that to be a health issue, because the property was being rented now. I bet you there are people who own properties in Bethel that allow paint to peel on the side of their house and don't repaint it. Quickly, because maybe they don't have the money this year, they'll do it next year, but the, the. Because it was a rental, the health department came out and established a standard which doesn't exist in the building department. Or the zoning, and that is that, uh, she ordered that the leaves around. In, in the, in the, in the, there were leaves in the wells, the window wells in the basement. They had to be removed, now, you know. If you're a homeowner in Bethel, you might want to remove the leaves, but you'd never think the health department would come out and order you to remove the leaves. In your well, but because it was rented, there was a different standard, now, I don't know where those, where those standards were codified, because they aren't. But meanwhile, in order to obtain the rent for the property, the health department had to be satisfied. That the leaves were cleaned up, that the, uh, but there was, there was a cracked window too, it's a, a paint, window paint, that had to be fixed. Now, all those things are fine, but there was a different standard because it was a rental property, now. I don't know that that's legal, but my client did it, because all he wanted to do is to get his rent paid. But the, the, the fact of the matter is that, uh, that everything you're saying about rental properties. I don't disagree, but codify it, put it in your zoning regulations, if you think that's where it belongs. I don't quite honestly, it's not a zoning issue, because the use of the property for a single family residence is the same. Whether you're a tenant or an owner. And how long you're there, according to the Whitby case, there's no distinction, and I agree, in Bethel, there's no distinction. So you can say we're treating this as a, as an Airbnb, or we're treating this as a motel, but it's not. It's a house, it's got a, a single family, and then once in a while, they're noisy, bad tenants. And that, it may require you to call, call the, the cops, I mean, but, but again. The issue that you've got to deal with, and I'd like you to focus on it, because I'd like this not to go to court if it doesn't have to. But the issue is, take a look at the, at the way that Whitby says, short term rentals have to be treated by a zoning commission. And then determine whether there's anything in your regulations that distinguishes that.
See, because I, I would look at it, you know, again, from the building standard, okay? That, you know, you, you have it as a, it's a residential use, that's for you have a resident who is there, who lives there. Who is familiar with the premise, okay?
Yeah, but I, I understand what you're saying, but right here, uh. The court noted that not only was there no regulatory requirement that a single family dwelling be owner occupied.
Who cares if it's owner?
That's right, well, you do, you're saying.
No, I, I don't, I, I don't care, if, if he rented out his house, okay, to a family. Okay, and they live there as a residence, they use it as their residence. Okay, they split their drivers, like, where are you, nineteen midway drive, they're resident, I could care less, okay?
But this is.
But I, I, I think what happens is, okay, is that you're not using it as a residence, you're using it as a hotel. And that's, that to me is transient, you're using them short term, it's a transient.
Yeah, we can debate it all night, but. I have, go ahead. This body is sitting here. For the purpose of value protection of property and a way of life, the trinequality of a neighborhood, the stability of a neighborhood. And the use of this property at this time. Is devaluing the neighbor's property, certainly upsetting their way of life. Talking has become a hazard and a nuisance. And I feel that we should do everything possible to utilize our authority on this board to stop that. Thus, I feel we should support Ms. Kavanaugh's position.
I got, I have, I have a question, you're right, I lost, I lost my quarter. Uh, your advertisement says that you sleep up to fifteen people. But you said you only have five people at a time come in.
Eight max, seven or eight.
Seven or eight. So I. That bothers me and, and the unfinished basement. Without a permit, the pool without a permit, the grill without, every, there's a lot of things wrong with the house that leaves.
That's different, if you want to.
I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I understand where you, where you're coming from.
The reason I asked about the kitchen in the basement and the bedroom, I mean, I can see that there's no kitchen, I can see that there is a bedroom, but, um. Because before, when we were talking about treating it as a bed and breakfast, when the homeowner is living there. Where would he put them if he didn't have that basement area?
So clearly, clearly it's not a B and B, it's, it's not a bedroom.
So then it goes back.
But the zoning regulations made provisions. To have that opportunity to do that type of service in the residential zones.
Correct.
So we're not ignoring the fact that we don't encourage transient hospitality. We do, in fact, show that we do have a regulated, a regulation in place to address it.
Yeah, and, and as far as. I'll tell you, the bottom line is.
You can tell me.
Do not have a regulation that, that, that deals with short term rentals of single family homes, period.
Complete. Because you actually have a bed and.
Mine orchards didn't have a regulation for a bed and breakfast.
I don't know that, I, I, I didn't read it, but I mean, it's Thomas case, you may be right, but that was the issue. The issue wasn't a B and B, the question is, I mean, the court was pretty specific. That if you own your house, you can rent it for a day, a week, a month, but by the way, the court said. It's one of a bundle of rights that constitute the essence of ownership, only a court can make that up, that's great language, it's not mine. Uh, but the, but the issue is, the issue is. If you want to regulate short term rentals, you need to write a specific regulation. And see if it gets passed by the zoning commission, and by the way, there are a lot of people in Bethel who might object. To limiting their rights to rent their properties for whatever time, period of time. I, I, I tell you, in New Fairfield, it was a major issue. Uh, and we dealt with it, with a fair regulation that got passed, it never got challenged, so. What I'm saying is, in this particular case, there is nothing in the Bethel regs that makes what. My client is doing a violation of the zoning regs. The neighbors may not like the people who rent and they may be correct, but that's not the issue here. The issue is, and again, there may be a problem with the railing around the pool, we'll look into that, there should be. A fence around the pool.
Let's stay with you.
Yeah, but we want to stay on the issue of, the citation is that renting your property through Airbnb. Is a violation of these regulations. And it doesn't even say renting it for short term, basically just says renting it through Airbnb is a violation. And there's nothing in the reg.
So what you're saying, we, we should have really cited the owner, is that what you're saying? Instead of Airbnb?
No, you have, I mean, you cited Airbnb, but you're, they're looking to the owner of the property, but no, there's nothing in here that says an owner. Can't directly rent a property directly, person to person, no agent involved for short term rentals. There's nothing there.
Any other commission questions?
I guess I, I, I guess I have a question too, Tim. Okay, so you, you, you bought the house from the person, the original person, when did you buy the house? Two thousand and three?
Yeah, twenty years ago.
So you, you, you actually had the house rebuilt in two thousand and thirteen?
Yes, I did, yeah.
And you've.
Yeah, my house burned down.
Right. So then you rebuilt the house and it was given a CO in two thousand and thirteen, so. After that time, you actually finished off the basement then?
When I bought the house, it was a basement house.
Yeah, but there's.
When I bought the house, when the house burned, was a basement house, was a finished basement now. When I bought the house.
Because when I see, when I'm looking at the building permit on here, it's for three. Three, uh, three bedrooms on the first floor and one on the second, nothing about in the basement. So I guess my question then would be is, who finished that off?
He said he, he bought it when it was finished, when he bought it.
Well, but.
Yeah, when I bought the.
But it's not on. So I have to, I just, it just looked like it was done afterwards, and. Yeah, I guess if there was no pool, I could tell you right now, I mean, not looking at the pool, and I've got to be honest with you, when I look at the photos, okay, of the bedroom. When I look at it downstairs.
There's no edges.
Yeah, well, I mean, it could, the windows could be, yeah, but they look very small.
But again, that is.
No, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out that, wait a second, you know, because we might, it might have been better off to then refer them to the building department and everybody.
That will prob, that, I'm sure that that will probably happen. At this point, it was a matter of let's, let's define the use first, make sure that the use, let's start with the use. And then from there, deal with all, all the other different departments and agencies involved.
So any other questions from the board?
And the use has not stopped, from what I understand, what I see as far as activities, I'm correct, I'm sorry. The use is still continuing, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah, the, the short term rentals are, are going up.
Okay, and most of them are going to, um, um, it seems like there's someone there long term with Florida plates.
A small wife.
A red suit or something.
My wife is, she has a red car with the, um.
Florida plates, and there's somebody else with Florida plates too. Oh, I thought they were renters, I don't know, but you said, because you said. Because you said you lived there, and so I just assumed it was renters, I'm sorry.
But I, I know my wife, she's not allowed to drive a car without Florida plate.
But does she live there?
She live there, we live together, okay, Alex.
Okay, well.
Well, that's another whole issue.
That's another, something that we don't need to get into at this point.
So Beth, I have a question, um, Ken's been wanting to ask a question, and I know I said that they can't have the.
It's the chairman's discretion if you want to go another round.
Trying to get one to ask, so go ahead.
First, it's a question I have is, what do they consider a resident living in a, in a house? What is the time period? Because there has to be some kind of a time period that says, he's a resident, he lives here. Now, I happen to know that the owner of that place was not there for a year and a half. While his kids were renting it out, now, that's all, I, you know, I just want to know. How often does he have to be there and say, yeah, I'm a resident? Don't you have to give mail to be a resident?
Well, could I answer that?
Because point of order, I, I think we're off track here, let's, let's get back on the issue, please.
All right, so at this point, uh, we're gonna, we have to see who's gonna sit.
No?
No, oh, this is.
Okay, so can I make a recommendation?
Okay.
And with, with the, um, it's so hard, I'm so used to calling people applicants.
We're petitioner here.
That with a petitioner, um, the petitioner has, um. Suggested that you read the current appellate court case. I, my suggestion would be is that you continue the hearing until January, to give you time to review that appellate court case. And, um, and then that, and we'll continue the hearing then, if that's in agreement with the.
Put your date in January.
Don't ask me because I screwed this one totally up.
The sixteenth.
Is that the other fault of a motion?
Yes, yeah, but she can't make it.
Hold on one second, hold on. Hold on.
No, there's no motion.
I'm sorry, we have some.
I've got a look, I'm out of the state for one week in Jan, I gotta check, I don't have a video, I'll get back to you, but let's continue it to January.
Continue it to January sixteenth, okay, so the, is it agreement, continuing?
Sets to the, a request after the potential to talk, explains the public hearings, the purpose of continuing in the January.
So as chair, you do not need to make a motion, you can, you can continue the public hearing.
The public hearing will be continued to January sixteenth, is that correct?
Sixteenth. And, and I'm, again, I'm just asking, that's requested, the, I would suggest that maybe. Since we have new counsel for the town of Bethel, and we have, of course, existing, uh, planning and zoning counsel. That maybe because there are legal issues, you might want to ask for opinion, for some advice, I would not be, it would not be out of law, out of mind.
And that has already been occurred.
There was never any question in my mind. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So.
We're gonna get you copies of that, the case that he cited, and then I'll get you a copy of the whole case. And also the, uh, synopsis of the case.
Thank you.
Okay.
Want to come in and get them? It won't be till after Christmas. I'm not coming back till next Wednesday.
But you, you, you can download them back into that.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the Connecticut Judicial website, you can get.
No, unless you have another case.
You have any more?
Okay, thank you.
You want me to read a change?
Yeah, have a good holiday, everybody, thank you.
Well, I got, I got six now, Stephanie do with twenty, in February, it's only, I mean, it's four, uh. Finally it's done, you got three daughters.
We're gonna get them together real well. You said you named with American. You go for it. They always say you went on the last ride. It took them a month and a half to get a product back. They're the only place you see.
I know, I know.
Over double the properties.
My ability.
Me too.
And there's a setback.
Yeah, I know, you're saying, you, you take a look at it, you can go around, forget whole people. The sad part about that park on it, I mean, you kind of have to, right? You know, you wouldn't have to go. Yeah. You wouldn't have to go. I mean, you know, but shortcut. But the nice thing is, you have a lot of. Everybody ready? You guys ready?
Yes, go.
Alright, we're gonna read twenty-three. Dash eight H S R I R E L C. One forty Greenwood Avenue. Uh, a setback of section four point four, point B, point one, point A. Fun setback from ten feet to three point two feet.
I have no report in regards to this. Presentation, um, mainly because it was um, structural in nature. And I thought it would be better for the applicant to plead their case as far as the needs for the um, encroachment.
Okay, well, I'll start off for the record, Dynas Verbickus, I'm a professional engineer with the firm of Artel Engineering Group. Here on behalf of the applicant. Um. And uh, the application that is before you um, is. Hopefully leading to um, a, a, a second and third story addition uh, to. The uh, buildings which are located at one forty Greenwood Avenue.
English Drug.
Which, yeah, Eng- English Drug and the MT Bank. Um, or, or, or empty bank.
That's what I said.
Either way, I'm cracking too bad. Um, I. Uh, located at this, at this address, so um. But the castle itself has a bunch of uh, buildings on it. Uh, and the buildings, you'll note, um, are located, the, the, the front property line is. As my finger is running along here, um. Properties are located in the Village Center District, uh, with the uh. Transit-oriented district overlay, so. Um, and both of these zones are. Pretty, pretty liberal and pretty uh, they, they include a lot of uses, primarily business and residential uses and uh. In fact, in the Planet Conservation and Development, um, a mixed use uh, is encouraged. In the downtown area, and that's exactly what's being proposed, um. With uh, with the addition, uh, and encroachment, should we get it? So. Portions of the building right now. Um, at the nearest point to the front property line, about three point three feet away, um. Where a ten-foot front yard setback is required, and, and you'll know, again, the. Majority of the building uh, that currently exists there, uh, varies between three point three feet at its nearest point. To about four and a half feet. Uh, from the front property, and of course, and you know, once you get to uh, the, the bank section of the building where it sets back. A little bit from Greenwood Avenue, that is compliant with the regulation. Um, where we are seeking. Where, where we are seeking the variance uh, would be right in the front. Corner of English Drug. Uh, there's a, a little notch where the building uh, cuts back in towards, towards the bank. Uh, and this uh, variance that we're seeking is to allow for uh, construction of a second means of access. Uh, to. The apartments that would be upstairs, and, and these apartments would be for uh, the long-term residents. Not uh. Not, not, not short-term, we don't envision that, um, but anyways, for a second means of, of egress uh, to. To the upstairs, so we would have uh, access to the second floor, not only through. A means of stairs and a, and an elevator on the rear side, but also uh, because. Of the units being up on top, we would have it also uh, a means of access uh, to the front of the building, so you've got. Uh, uh, three ways of getting in and out. And, and most importantly, during an emergency, you want to be able to have more than uh, than one way in or one way out, um. The property owner has been. Looking at this and working on this for a couple of years now, um. And he's been before the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, asking, you know, what do they think, how's, how's. What are their thoughts, um, and it was loosely discussed and uh. And, and they came up with a number of, of hopefully sixteen uh, residential units, a mix of one and two-bedroom uh, units. Uh, located on the second and, and third floor, um. And uh, the way that the uh, building addition was designed was to keep the structural integrity of. The existing building, um, not impacting any of the uh, structural elements. Um, as the structural engineers uh, that are involved on the, the proposed development. Had caution about removing or touching or, or working uh, with the front wall, so. The way that this is designed is the stairwell uh, would. Actually jot out. And run along the face of the uh, existing building, so we would utilize. Uh, the existing face as one side of the stairwell, and then. The face coming out towards the road would be the uh, the other side of the stairwell. Um. Again, this uh. The proposal would be in keeping with the Planet Conservation and Development, and also. Um, a, a, a mixed use as encouraged by the transit-oriented district, and. You couldn't get a better uh, location. Uh, for this type of use, um. And again, so the, the variance that we're seeking is to uh, to a distance of three point two feet, um. And um. And the existing nearest point at this uh, section of the building is three point three feet, so. But uh. Point one uh, foot, about an inch and a quarter. Um, closer than what the nearest point is now, um. I have with me uh, Chris Busnell, from BBS Design. Uh, who prepared uh, the architectural uh, drawings and renderings, and Chris can. I think at this point. Tell you a little bit more about the building, how the units are laid out, and uh. How we got to where we are. So I'll take this down and let Chris talk a bit about what he and his firm have done. And then we can talk uh, further, answer questions and so on, thank you.
Good evening, Chris Busnell, BBS Design, I'm the project manager on, on this uh, job. Um, as Mr. Verbickus said, we are proposing a two-story wood-framed. Apartment complex with eight units per floor, a mix of two-bedroom and one-bedroom. Uh, it's gonna have a flat roof, which is gonna be, uh, I got an APDM rubber system roof, um. So, uh, as, as Mr. Verbickus uh, mentioned, our biggest hardship, and that's all we're requesting this variance. Is the. The stair tower up front. Uh, per building codes and for safety codes, we need to have two means of egress from any floor. To the outside. And the only way we can provide that is one through the back, which is not a problem, this is actually the existing, um. Basement. I'm gonna try to flip through here, can you put a bit of footies for you, um? Just, I'll send you over. Shove it away here. Let's see, the existing basement, we have, I think pharmacy floor and same. We were proposing to go over the footprint of this, now. The other hardship we have, and that's what led us to, to propose the stair power in the front here. Is I do have with me, and I can make this available upon request. From the structure engineering firm that was hired by the client. They, they did uh, test bits, they uh, proposed a preliminary structural plan. With columns and trusses and steel beams. That completely float away from the existing building. So beside the few columns that are gonna run through the existing pharmacy, everything else is, we're taking the roof off. And we're gonna be floating a new structure above it, and then the two-story is gonna go up from there with a roof. So. Um, they made it very clear to us that structurally, working within the pharmacy or the bank is almost impossible. That's why they created this grid. And that, that created the hardship for us with the stair front of tower, um, up, up front. Uh, the back is not a problem at all. This is.
I can, uh, can you maybe show on the, on, on the rendering, kind of where we're talking?
Uh, so this is, this is what we're proposing for the stair tower, and this corner right here is really the. A piece that's gonna stick out about a foot, one point two with it.
Yeah, one foot two inches.
That's gonna stick past the front of the pharmacy. So it's uh, on this side is actually jots in about eight feet, because that's where the face of the bank is, so that's existing. So we're actually going back into the bank. And the entry is gonna be at the bottom here, you can kind of see it, so it's kind of tucked away, it's not making it obvious from the street, like, oh, what's there? Another door, where's this go? But yet it's covered and private. And uh, we were restrained, obviously, by the, the location of the bank doors and windows and. And the height that the engineers proposed, they actually want fourteen feet from floor to floor, which creates a lot of steps. In commercial use. The riser of a step is maximum of seven inches, that creates a lot of steps. So that's why we needed quite a few risers to get to the different floors. So. That said, the stair tower itself took up a lot of space, but we made it work within the confines of the jog there. And just sticking out a little bit. Again. Uh, of, of our meeting, I'm meeting with the town a few times and going back and forth. Uh, we're proposing to stay within the style of the existing, um, this is an existing brick, as you can see right here. So we're just basically cutting this roof off. And building on top of it. We're proposing to do two stories, was gonna have some beautiful clapboard, nice traditional windows with shutters. Define the, the stair tower with some brick to match the existing, and then. At the top, we're creating some beautiful parapets to give it that Greenwood Avenue, you know, with the brackets and the gables and, um. And I have another set of views here that we created, so you get an idea of how it looks from the top. And from the bank side, when you drive up from like Dr. Mike's. This is kind of what you will see, we're replacing the roof over the uh, drive-through with a nice set of railings, because we're gonna have windows here. So that roof would have been in the way. And you can see the entrance to the other stair tower, a little more clear here. And this is a bird's eye view, kind of how the building will look from the top. And you can get a feel for where the pharmacy is, where the bank is, where the drive-through is. And what we're proposing for the new um, stair tower.
And that stair tower, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, no, please fill in as.
The uh, this, this stair tower too, where, where you would come out, you'd be uh, coming out, not facing the road, but.
Correct.
Facing into the building, so you've got a nice little alcove underneath the stair tower, right?
That's where that person is, yep, that's exactly where you're coming out, yep, so you're not coming out onto the street at all. At all. Um. So again, our hardships are the, the requirement for multiple exits from each floor, structural is a major, major concern. Um, we do have schematics that they proposed on how to frame this up already. Uh, we did a pr- a preliminary code analysis for safety and fire. So uh, what we're also proposing, which you can kind of see on this one. Is, this is the diner building right now, Jacklins. There's currently a firewall, like um, I think it's a cement wall there. So we're actually gonna keep our building, the proposed new floors, five feet back from that wall. Because of fire separation reasons. And also, because on this side, there's gonna be bedrooms, we need to provide egress from each bedroom. So we have to have windows, so we're creating like a walkway, catwalk, safety egress for. Uh, in case of fire or fire trucks, um. As Mr. Verbickus said, we're gonna provide an elevator in the back. Uh, the building is gonna be fully sprinkler and fire-protected, which means all the exterior walls are gonna be fire-rated, and um. At uh, at this point, um, open to questions. Thank you.
One, two questions?
Yes.
This is proposing sixteen new units?
Yes.
An accommodation for parking?
Yes, so originally, when we met with uh, with uh, Miss Cavagna, um. Believe the count that our client request was more like twenty-four units. We kind of narrowed it down, and then we came into an agreement, unisum, that sixteen is the right fit, we have plenty of parking. There's the possibility, correct me if I'm wrong, for additional parking in the back if needed, um, but yes, so.
I'm, I'm assuming somewhere between sixteen and thirty-two cars.
Probably correct, yes. Mm-hmm. There's um. Two, two-bedroom units per floor, and then the rest are all one-bedroom. So a total of four, for uh, two-bedroom units. The rest are one-bedroom. Uh, most occupancy per floor allowed by code.
And who addressed the uh, or. Like, accepted or. Allowed or approved. Sixteen to thirty-two additional parking spaces.
That is what I could approve it, it is goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
That's gonna be up to them.
It is gonna be up to the Planning and Zoning Commission and their decision as to how many parking spaces.
So.
The lot itself. The lot itself, I believe, has uh, I wanna say sixty, seventy-two? I get the lots mixed up over there.
I think it's seventy-two.
I think it's seventy-two spaces presently. And there is um, an opportunity to uh, go into the mountain.
Mm-hmm.
The hill, not the mountain, but there is opportunity to also pick up five to seven more if needed into the hill.
Okay.
And the, the pharmacy does close at seven o'clock each night, so. There's obviously. Um, parking available after that too, so I believe that one is still close. Early, early too, I think it's just breakfast out and lunch left, so.
So um, if, if I may, again, Dynas Verbickus, the um. I think that the reason that the. We'll, again, we'll have to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I think the reason that they uh, contemplated. Uh, this development is because we're located in that transit-oriented district, with the hope being that so many people won't have cars. Um, and it, it's just an anecdotal thing, um, I worked with a client in Danbury years ago. Um, where she had a, a six, happened to be sixteen-year-old apartment building in the downtown area, and. The tenants that she had, I think there's maybe two tenants that were the whole plus. Downtown Danbury, the bus. If the parking lot was full. That's because people were subletting their parking spaces. To offset the cost of renting, but um.
There are seventy existing, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to clarify, just going by the survey. Um, there's seventy parking spaces in that rare lot right now.
The, the whole thought again here is that uh, people would use transit to get in and out of the city or.
Would be an only person that doesn't have a car.
Nobody.
Yeah, they could walk to the train station right from there.
I'll be honest with you, today I had a, a girl I've known since she was five years old, and she has a disability, but she doesn't drive a car. And she is actually at, um, you know, like a condo, the mailbox is about half a mile away, that's a pain in the. You know, because it's not.
So just to uh, give you a quick overall, the floor plans, which are identical on both floors, this is gonna be the main hallway.
You need a variance.
That connects all the, the apartments, as you can see, we have one, two, three, four, five, one-bedroom, I mean, these are two bedrooms, I'm sorry, but uh. So this is the stair, the stair tower question, as you can see how many risers we have to put in.
Chris, at that, at that intercept, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. You're actually gonna go into the, into the original building, because this stair is really part of the stuff that's gonna go down into the.
Right, and it's gonna be um, above the. Right, and it's gonna be um above the existing pharmacy, because by the time we get up there, it's gonna be.
But is it all gonna be of that, because like you said, by the time you get across here and you're you're gonna be about eighty inches maybe?
Yeah.
Eighty inches and then go up through the pharmacy?
So we're gonna have to uh. Figure out the structure engineer, we discussed with them, they're gonna have to figure out a way to support this new stairwell.
Yeah, so basically, you're gonna, you're gonna cut up into here, right?
Correct, so there's gonna be a little cut out to the wall and then it keep going up, yes.
And I mean, that shows in this other drawing, but.
Yeah, that's the second floor.
So that's, I guess that's why I'm, so you're not gonna strip the brick then along?
No, no.
Cause I guess I'm, you know, if that's only like one floor, I guess I would say. As long as you gotta go through the wall, why wouldn't, and then you can push the stair back.
Well, the problem is that that's an exterior wall, so.
Yeah, this is an exterior wall.
Right.
But I mean, it's at that point, it's not gonna hold anything, cause you're really coming out and you're actually gonna put the new facade out here.
I'm gonna have to talk to a structural guy on that, honestly.
Because this, your stair is gonna go up through here, so wherever you got your voice, you're gonna have to. Figure that, and I guess my my, one of my other questions is is that if that's the case, when you know, this comes into the pharmacy. You know, I mean, if you're gonna have like this, you know, stairway that's gonna go across there, so. And if you're gonna go in through the wall, I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is, it looks like it. Might have been able to get the stairway right on this section and then that wouldn't have really affected anything up on top, because it's all open, right?
Um, yeah, yeah, yeah. It just, the problem is, is you know.
If you came up, if you came up this way, you'd actually pull this steer back, you might even have more room.
So I'll be honest with you, we spent so much time in trying to figure out those stairs, how to fit, I believe there's like literally. Thirty some risers to make it work, that we've exhausted like so many.
Well, yeah, so that's the thing, that by the time you get by here, and if you're only like.
Yeah.
Seventy, eighty inches there, you know, then you're gonna go with the landing, so then that landing is gonna be.
And again, uh structural guy did drop columns into the store, so it's like. If we start dropping columns everywhere, it's just gonna become useless.
Useless space, yeah.
You know, we're trying to keep the 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 business side of it too and that that was, that was the nice thing that. We figured when we designed this whole structure to be free floating on top of the existing is that. We're not really disturb, well, we're not disturbing the bank at all. Um and the pharmacy too, so we wanted to keep those businesses as they are.
So you're gonna go right over to Duckwork and everything?
Yep, yeah, that's why the fourteen floor to floor. Uh that was something that we discussed way in the beginning before you even started designing this. Uh the engineer felt like they gave, they gave him enough clearance so we can fireproof the bottom. Cause we have to have uh separation between the business and the apartments, even though it's gonna be fully sprinkler, you still have to have a separation between use. So they they said fourteen foot is the magic number and I was like, okay, well, I gotta come up thirty risers somewhere, so.
Any other questions from?
Yeah, the 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 facade that's on the front, that's obviously that's extending more than two feet, is there anything that we have to do for that? For that front overhang, it looks like a beautiful building.
So, that's a great question, that's a very, very good question, I was.
I like how the little building looks and without it, it really wouldn't look as nice, but if there's something we have to do.
Is eighteen inches the maximum production you can have for a uh?
I'm not, you know, I'd have to check the commercial, I'm on residential.
So, yeah, we can, we can, we can definitely notch back, I mean, we right now we.
Well, I'm just saying if we, I'm just saying if we had to do something more, they give her.
If you had to do something more, it's not gonna happen, they would have to come back here.
Yeah.
If something more has to be given, I'm sorry, but that's the way of the age.
Uh is is is, I'm not sure exactly, but is is there um. Is there allowance for uh architectural projections?
Yes, there is, and I, I did wanna go through the regs right now.
Okay.
Any questions?
Um in the in the back, were you, were you putting the stair tower in the back?
Gonna be right here.
Where where's the accessibility for that gonna go, how are you gonna get in there?
Uh it's gonna come right to the side here, it's gonna be a.
Cause it is in the back, right where that is, it's right where the accessibility, yes it.
You know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to rework the site plan.
Yep. This is gonna be the proposed door, getting to the stair tower and we're gonna have to rework. There's a, there's a handicap spot there right now that we have to rework, just some of the sidewalk and uh spot and all that, but. Again, our hardship is really here.
For, you know, for the back that, you know, back of the door for the pharmacy, because you pull up in there and the problem with with the stair tower. Right in the neck, I guess my.
And you know, and and the accessibility currently is. I think borderline of that.
Well, I'm getting older, so I might be using some of that stuff.
Regardless, we need to try to make it accessible, yes.
Right.
Alright, uh so we're good on our side for now, David, you.
Yeah, I just wanna like, first I want to um, Sri want to apologize. Uh David Vera, Sri I want to apologize, he couldn't make it, um he was gonna make it, on the way home, his wife had an accident, so. He had to go attend to her, she's okay, so he apologized. I just wanted to emphasize, um we've been working on this for two years. The elevator, we strongly recommend that you have an elevator for the purpose of having accessibility upstairs, we want. We want accessibility upstairs, so we could have people, older people have access to the park. So we really consider that.
Yeah. And uh that's a good point that David brings up, because some of the units are actually designed with that in mind, so we have. At least type B um. Accessible use for each unit, because in Connecticut, anything over twenty units. Has to have a type A also, but we are sixteen, so we're only required to have a type B type unit. By providing the elevator, we actually are able to provide type B units. Otherwise, we won't even be able to provide those, but as they're all designed for accessible future use, if need to be.
And some of the new, a lot of the new stuff downtown, I don't know any of them that have elevators. We have to, I had to emphasize that.
Okay, uh we need to see now?
No.
Why not?
You can, it, does anybody have any comments, any good questions? Anybody on the commission have any other questions they would like to ask the applicant? Then, if you're done with the hearing, you can close the hearing. You can close the hearing. Okay, by consensus of the commission, does anyone have any other questions? No.
No.
Both of them closed.
Just close.
It's closed.
I declare this public hearing closed.
Very close.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Have a great holiday. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. We want, we want things to look nice.
Yeah. This, you know, like I say, we're not scared, we're gonna go, it's gonna, our names are.
Yeah, and again, it's it's one of those things that we could still, you know, look at even in more detail, I'm sorry.
Are you a full member of the board?
Yes.
Okay, Gary, are you a full member of the board?
I'm only like a point B or something.
Okay, so you're gonna sit, Gary, you've been wanting to just say this.
I know, I know, I'm following my sheet.
So go ahead.
We're gonna see Mr. Drive and Mr. Corchane. Mr. Bowing.
Okay, and we'll figure this, we'll figure out who's who tomorrow, or whatever.
Okay.
You look at the sheet, there's a regular member and then there's an alternate.
I don't have that sheet.
I know, okay, check what David is.
Second one, the best looking guy in the room.
This week, next.
Drugstore a little too, too much, what do you think?
Alright, so.
Says he's the best looking guy.
I will keep my mouth shut for the rest of the meeting unless I'm called upon.
Okay, so uh. We're looking, we're gonna have a discussion amongst ourselves, like a work session here.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You guys are changing the rhythm.
I noticed, um your recording secretary is gonna say something.
Um this is a meeting, you need to go over the regular meeting minutes.
The special meeting. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want me to do it?
Approve the regular minutes at the last meeting.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the meeting.
I second.
In voices, next item on the agenda is in voices, new times, one thousand four hundred and four dollars and sixteen cents.
Wow.
You have a motion to approve paying those legal notices that I abort.
I first that, first the uh.
Yeah, you made the motion.
Motion, okay. Yep, second.
Okay, we got that. No public comment, work session, two hundred, two hundred and twenty four, twenty twenty four. Hearing schedule, you all have copies of it?
I may have not had it in August.
Alright, so we have a meeting once a month, which is the third Tuesday, third Tuesday of the month, once a month. Um your meetings are always in this room at seven o'clock, there is no Zoom associated with your meeting. You have the month of August off.
Question?
Yes.
Would we consider six P M. as a start?
It's up to the board.
Yeah. I'm recommending starting at six. Okay, anybody got an issue with that?
I don't, not me, I'm fine, whenever.
Is that good? It's a good for, it's a good for you guys. Okay, let's do that. We uh amend the start time and change the time to six P M. And accept the uh recommended dates of meeting as dictated on the. Piece of paper.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second and all those in favor.
I, I.
Thank you, John.
They're letting me do it by.
Okay, um. Under work session, all you have is the twenty twenty four hearing schedule.
Okay.
And that's, so you're at the end of your meeting?
Okay, so they wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Five minutes.
Second, second?
What, anybody want a second?
Wait, 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 wait. Vote on what?
No, I can, I'll explain it during your meeting.
That's where you lost me, so.
During your meeting.
Okay, so we're during the meeting. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, second and, all those in favor.
I.
Okay. Now explain.